Okay. Aloha, everybody. Welcome to the reconvening for decision making on items that were previously heard on Tuesday, February 11th of 2025 at 3:00 PM. On February, sorry, February 6th, we heard these measures at 3:00 PM. We're decision making on them today, Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, in room 225. A lot of 225s. Meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties or false alarms, the committee will convene to discuss any outstanding business at 3:01 PM Thursday, February 13, 2025, in room 225. And a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. So with that, we'll go right into the decision making. The first bill we had up was Senate Bill 1513. Given the testimony that was submitted and other issues that were brought up, we're going to defer this measure indefinitely. Okay? Next up, we have Senate Bill 786. Members, you remember, we had testimony from Mr. Fritz and others on some of the things that need to be done in the bill. A lot of things need to be done, and given the constraints of timeline and everything else, we are in a biennium. So I'm going to park this bill here for this session so we can work on it during the interim and come out with a proposed SD1 that encompasses all the things that will be discussed and perhaps can capture the ongoing changes that are occurring every day in the federal government. So we're going to park this one for this year. I defer indefinitely. And finally, on Senate Bill 1031, we're going to move this as a Senate draft one. I went ahead and I spoke to the author about the changes to the bill, and with their support, we are recommending the following. The legislature may adopt concurrent resolutions for proposed non-binding advisory referendum questions only on proposals concerning issuance of general obligation bonds to the electorate. The chief election officer must publish notice of each referendum question at least 30 weeks prior to the advisory referendum. And then results of the R advisory, and the legislature must consider them when authorizing bond issuance. If the legislative action opposes the majority vote, a written explanation is required in the legislative record. And due to the changes, and to keep the conversation going, we're going to make the effective date of January 1st, 24/91. And also, in the committee report, we're going to note that should the next committee, if they choose to hear the bill, they thoroughly examine the concerns raised by the opposition regarding this amended proposal, this amended proposal, as well as the underlying proposal. The review should also include analysis of potential fiscal, administrative, and legal implications of implementing advisory referendums solely for budget issue. Members, questions, comments, if not vice chair, Senate Bill 1031 SD1, I vote yes.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Morawaki?
Aye.
Senator Sanwana Maturu?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Resubvention.
Measure passes.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. This concludes our decision making on this agenda. Start off with us, Mike. Aloha, everybody. Welcome to the joint hearing between Government Operations and our amazing friends at Water and Land. For the, we're here Tuesday, February 11th, 2025 at 3:05 PM. You heard the housekeeping notes from previously. And to add to that, in order to facilitate this hearing in timely manner, we will be enforcing a strict two-minute time limit on testimony. Senate Bill 411, first up, we have Budget and Finance.
Good afternoon, chairs, vice chairs, members of the committees. The Department of Budget and Finance stands on its testimony in opposition.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming up and saying that. All right. Next up, Don Chang, Deal and R. Megan.
Good afternoon, chairs, vice chair, committee members. Megan Stats, Administrator for the Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation. The department stands on its written testimony in support. I'm here for any questions, as well as our State Park Administrator. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have Deputy Attorney General John Dubill.
In person. Thank you.
Good afternoon, chairs, vice chairs, and members of the committee. Our testimony is that this bill is subject to challenge based on the fact that it implicitly says that there is, shall be funding for these small boat, or these capital improvement projects without actually appropriating any funding. And so we would recommend adding some amount of appropriations to this bill so that it is no longer subject to challenge. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you, Don.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we have, let's see, Edwin Watanamura for HVAC Fisherman's Alliance. They have submitted written in support. We also have Denver Saxton Coon for Ocean Tourism Coalition, written in support. Zachary LaPrade for Calypso Charters. They have written in support. We have a late individual, William Chang, submitted written in support. Late from Antoinette Davis, Activities and Attractions Association of Hawaii, written in support. We have Tim Felinsky and individual in support. Also, three lates, Alii Grimes, Keahihoe, and Kate Thompson, all individuals, all in support. That's all we have on 411. Anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Nope, seeing none. I believe I turn it over to my illustrious coach here.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Let's proceed then to SB 1103 relating to community districts. It establishes a process by which the legislature may establish community districts by concurrent resolution. Requires the board members of the community districts to be elected by residents of the community district attorney general. Aloha.
Good afternoon. Kevin Tong, Deputy Attorney General. We have concerns that this bill may be challenged as violating Article 3, Section 14 of the Hawaii Constitution by establishing law through concurrent resolution, and also Section 37-52.3 by failing to establish, failing to satisfy the requirements to establish a special fund. And we have recommendations in our written testimony. I'm available for questions.
Okay. Thank you. HCDAs?
Good afternoon, chairs, vice chairs, and members of the committee. Craig Nakamoto, Executive Director of the Hawaii Community Development Authority. My testimony is in two parts. I've got to go through some general comments and then some specific comments. For the general comments, you know, we support the vision and concept of a legislative established community district governed by elected boards. With the technical assistance, I think, you know, we can lead the community planning and possible development in these districts. I would also note that in, I'm hoping that in the near term, you know, specific districts do not get established so that it affords me and the agency and the board the opportunity to kind of look at the agency's existing governance and management structure to determine what kind of structure is optimal to implement this bill. And I'll get into a little more details, chairs, in a moment. When you, when you look at the bill and the governance, it's going to require an elected board. That elected board, it really kind of takes the place of, in a lot of ways, of our traditional HCD authority board. So the comments that I have, especially on item three of my testimony as it relates to powers and the powers of the board, try to sort of carve out instances where the board may, our board, when I say our board, I should say the authority board, may want to step in and kind of, you know, opine on some of these or decide, take action on it. So I've added language or suggested language for page four, line 13 to 19, that says, "as necessary to carry out the purpose of this part as to matters brought before the authority by the executive director and as to matters upon which the authority has not accepted delegation by the board." Because there are some instances where, for example, just for example, if there is a condemnation action that's required and the board, the board, the elected board has that power, it may be necessary to get the authority board to weigh in and to approve that condemnation. So I think I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is sort of balance the governance of the elected board with the governance of the authority board. The other thing I would note is if this is going to be, if the district is going to be established by concurrent resolution, and I heard the Deputy Attorney General's comment, I would suggest that the establishment of these districts be conditioned on two things. One, that it establish at least one dedicated FD position for the district, at least one, and appropriate, appropriate amount of money that may be necessary to carry out the purpose of this part. The one position I contemplated as kind of like a city planner kind of person that's going to be with the district from start to sunset and kind of work with the community to engage with them on a community plan. So it's kind of like a city planner kind of concept. Those are the, I think, my main sort of specific comments. There's other comments in there that are more formatting and typographical in nature, but those are really my specific comments aimed at trying to balance the elected board governance with the authority board.
Well, you know, I've had plenty of experience with this thing.
So have I. So have I.
But one of the things that I'm sorry, Chair, if you could just jump in real quickly.
Senator McKelvey.
That came up was just an appointed board versus an elected board. Conversations on the bill last year went back and forth. The community, at least the community in discussion of that bill was starting to lean back towards an appointed board because of the recognition that the elected board could have all unintended consequences, including lack of diversity representation. Do you think that that's something that should be looked at further down the road?
Well, you know, Senator McKelvey, I think if we're going to go to a kind of appointed board, it sort of takes away a lot of the, you know, vision and intent of this, this community district. I saw some of the testimony submitted by individuals talking about whether the elected board members have qualifications to, you know, serve in that function. But what I would, what I would note, Senator McKelvey, I think, is, you know, it's just like any other election. You know, the constituents will, you know, look at a person's qualifications and decide whether that person is, is right to be on this board as an elected official. If they don't like it, then the next election, they can put somebody else up and run against that person. So I hope I answered your question.
You did, but I mean, like in for our area in particular, obviously, because I know we're running out of time, is that we have a major, first capital of what, you know, the community felt that needs to be native Hawaiian representation on there at all times. The elected board, you're not guaranteed that at all. So that's, I think, the concerns of ensuring that there is representation from critical groups within the community.
Yeah. And I think, I think I said this when we were out in the community with the Lelley Bill. And, and I, what I suggested was that, what it means is, I think the community has to come out and they have to put a candidate or have candidates nominated, you know, and for an elected position, they have to come out and vote.
Well, that's the way we keep preaching that.
Yeah.
And everywhere else, it doesn't seem to pan out that way.
Yeah. I know that sounds pretty, you know, so.
No, I appreciate this conversation. Thank you, Chair. Appreciate you indulging. That's all for me.
No problem. I have, well, several, several questions. When we talk about elected board, who's the electors? Who, who votes for these people, the district?
It's going to be, so what I envision is in the first part of the bill, when a bill is being established, I'm sorry, when a district is being established, there's going to have to be a boundary and a set boundary, geographic boundary. So it's just like having District 1 as an example, you know? They're the ones that are going to be voting for the board.
Okay. We're talking about the population of those in District 1?
Yeah, as an example.
Okay. Okay. The only question I ask is, aside from Oahu, where you have the community board members, we don't have that on the neighbor islands. So that's, it's a little bit confusing because we were, we would have to establish these community, I guess, organizations. So that's, I can see an issue. How, I guess, is a county supposed to set that up or what we're going, what's called in this bill? Who, who, who will give the direction? Is the county councils?
So, so the way.
As, as you read it?
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I, you're not the introducer of this measure, so. It's, it's good questions because, yeah.
It's fine. So on page one of the bill, line 13, and all the way down to the end on page, on line 17, it establishes how these community districts will be established by concurrent resolution.
So that means that the counties then, we're giving the opportunity for the counties?
Well, no, we're, the legislature will be creating these community districts by concurrent resolution.
Okay.
And you've heard the Deputy Attorney General.
Okay, yes, sure. And I totally agree with him.
But it, it's the legislature that will pass a concurrent resolution establishing community districts.
Okay. Okay. And these groups are doing what? They're approving developments in that particular district? If there is a development, like housing, like anything that, that would create some economic, I guess, development or something like that?
So I think the elected board's first and primary task is laid out on page five, line 12. That's in 206E-F. The board, the elected board shall create and implement as expeditiously as possible a community plan for, for, you know, for the district. This would be no different in a lot of ways than what HCD does. I mean, we do community planning, we do master planning. The board, through HCD and the staff, will be creating this community plan.
No matter what the county's general plan is already adopted by the counties, so then this particular community, committee will then create their own development plan or whatever plans they see they wish to have in their district.
This, this particular, this particular bill, unlike some other bills, doesn't specifically supersede county. So I would, I would think that we would work in coordination with the county and create a plan. What does the community want to see in terms of development? You know, in certain districts, you have people who are spearheading community planning and development. In other districts, you don't have anybody. And I think for those districts, this community district might allow the community to engage in that, Senator.
Okay. Yeah. Well, it's, it seems like it's interrupting, and let me say that, coming from the Big Island or any other counties aside from Oahu. I can see this maybe for Oahu because you got the population and you have growth here that may not be around for a while with their population increase. But I think, I see this as more dangerous in doing something like this and circumventing the counties in what they do in their own general plans. But I guess, because the districts are, as an example, when you create districts, who decide what the districts are? Because we're a population, as an example, Big Island, we're 200,000 population, and you have communities spread out. So if you have, in my district, Pa'uka'a Papaiko Pepe Kew, and further on, Ha'kalau the Hamaku'a Ko. So would you decide, would we develop that as a district, like you say, you know, I guess you're going to create districts? So, yeah. If, if this was only for a particular county, I can see, but I, I think there's more issues I see that interrupts, interrupts some of the big, the county's responsibility for managing their own areas.
Chair, yeah. I, I respect the questions and the comments, but if you allow me to explain a little bit more. So one, you know, this is, these are districts that are not going to be established by me or HCD. These are districts that are going to be established by the legislature. Second, I don't think there's, I don't think it's fair to say that we're going to circumvent the city. I think what's fair is, we're going to work with the city and work with it to work on a community plan.
I disagree. I think the power of CDA is with the fact that it becomes your one world community government. So it should, it should actually supersede the county.
Well, it, it doesn't specifically say that. The second, you know, I would slightly disagree that this is not for the neighbor islands. I, I would, I would offer that this might be just suited for neighbor island communities where, you know, it's not as built up as an urban community on, on Oahu, and they're looking to get some community planning for a district. So I would kind of note that. I mean, I'm not sure I agree with that comment that it's not for the neighbor.
Well, the thing is that the legislature is creating this, and this is not being created by the mayors or the city councils or the county councils. And so, as an example, I love what you're doing, HCD. I'm a big supporter of you for several reasons. Because you already have established board and you already can make, there's a lot of exemptions you have. You have developments can occur immediately because of your, your previous and your current responsibilities, which I saw. So it seems like now we're creating mini HCDAs throughout the counties, and that's what I see, and it's troubling. And on top of that, when you talk about different, if we were one state and not have island structure, it's probably easy to manage, but now we're going to get the monies and the, and the personnel to manage all these, all these community districts around. But anyway, it's just an interesting concept, but I think I'm not ready to, to create something that, but I, I know because you're, you're here, so.
But I think, Senator, if, if you think it's not ready for the neighbor islands, then the legislature shouldn't create it for the neighbor islands, but at least have the option to create it wherever the legislature sees fit. The second comment, I think, is, again, I would slightly disagree with the whole mini HCD kind of concept because what we're trying to do here is through the resources of HCD, through the experience that we have with HCD is to lend resources to this elected board to help them plan out, plan a community. So I would a little bit disagree with the mini HCD comment. I think we're trying to use our resources, knowledge, to help this community, this elected board.
How do you give autonomy to planning if the county and planning commissions and the department has the final trump? It's not going to be any planning, it's going to be advisory.
No, I think it's, I think it's still planning. Senator McKelvey, I think, you know, within the confines of that, maybe the people want certain things in this area, they want to park. I mean, I, I think those can all be done within.
Yeah. I'd like to follow up with, with Senator McKelvey's comments as well. All of our counties in their organizations, they have already, under their Public Works Division and Planning Departments, they are governed by charter that they have the boards and commissions. We have planning commissions that do all of their, their district development plans approvals. So I think this is going to interrupt what the counties are presently doing. That, that's my personal feeling. You're taking away the responsibilities from, we, the legislature is, is then now telling all the districts, creating a new division. I think there's an interruption of management in, anyway.
Yeah, I think we just agree to disagree. I think this could actually, instead of an interruption, it could complement what's.
I don't think so. Not, I don't think so. You got the inward planning commissions on Big Island, and you got the inward planning commissions, and it's going to interrupt, I think, with whatever they do and their general plans that's approved by the councils. I think this will interfere with, with the county's responsibilities.
Thank you, Senator.
Kauai and Maui, I can speak, but I, I think the concept may be good if we didn't have a good government regulations in management our counties, but I think, I have a feeling this is more of an interruption.
Chair.
Senator, yes. Senator. Morawaki, yeah.
It just, this kind of reminds me of what we did in Pulehunui in Maui, where they needed to have the resources. So this, this language that says may, legislature may establish or help in, in areas that are undeveloped, but you bring in the resources necessary to work with the county. Might be something where it's an option, as, as Craig says, but I'm just not sure because it's an elective board, then Pulehunui was all appointed, so I don't know how that sits, but if you can compare that with what, oh, and.
But Pulehunui is under HCD.
Yeah, but it was. It was in that way because of frustrations with the county.
It was, yeah. Oh, yeah. It was created, I think, several years ago.
Yeah, yeah, in the '22 legislative session. I think this is, to clarify, I think this is a little more analogous to the Lelley Bill for Lahaina than the Pulehunui. Pulehunui is sort of squarely within HCD, and we have a board that's patterned after the other HCD boards, just to build infrastructure. But I think this is patterned more after the Lelley Bill.
As I discussed, there was a lot of ongoing conversations on that bill, you know, still back and forth with the community. So, and again, there was this opposition. There's, there's people there, like my good friend, Hawaiian friends, who are like, we want one community government with the community controls, the zoning, the money and everything at the local level, regardless of political subdivision. So there's that vision. Then there's a vision, of course, of the idea this could be a community overlay to work with the counties. But there are competing visions about this within Maui.
I think there's going to be a lot of thought into this measure. I mean, it's, you already, we already experienced with you and your district in Pulehunui, so.
I mean, I'm a supporter, but my community, there's a lot of people like, man, we should have done that bill.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
But, but anyway.
Thanks so much, Scott. Okay, let's, Craig, let's hear from Scott Nago, Elections. State Elections Office has communication comments, Budget and Finance. Okay, also has communications, actually, and comments. Danny DeGracia, an individual in opposition. Jacob Waincheck in comments. And I don't think anyone is on Zoom because our Attorney General was going to be on Zoom. I'm so happy you're here, but thank you for your comments as well. Is there anyone else wishes to speak to SB 1103? Hearing none, then shall we move on to the next one? Chair? Okay, let's proceed to SB 1308 relating to Plans. Removes outdated requirements for plans filed with the registrar's office. Updates the statutory fee schedule to reflect those adopted in Chapter 40 of Title III H of the Hawaii statute. Grants additional discretion to DAGs to approve the formal of plans. Updates permissible drawing scales used in plans. And let's call on our test, and this is, by the way, members, this is an administration bill, and we'll call in DAGs.
Aloha.
Hello, Chair. Hello, Mr. Chair, members of the committees. My name is Meyer Cummins. I'm a land surveyor for DAG's Land Survey Division. I'm here testifying on behalf of Comptroller Regan. We stand in support of this bill, and we stand on our written testimony that's submitted, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Chief, thank you so much. Is there anyone else? Yes, okay. Senator McKelvey.
No, just a quick question. Will this measure assist or could it be a vehicle to assist in replacing the survey monuments that were removed in the lands of Lahaina or cleared during the wildfire cleanup?
No, it wouldn't. This bill is mostly housekeeping, and it has to do with reducing costs for the public that submit maps for my office to review.
Which helps.
Which does help, but it doesn't quite replace monuments per se, but it does provide information for future subdivisions to, or surveys to refer back to if there were, let's say, another natural disaster. It would assist in getting more maps through our office and approve.
I want to flag this for you and your people now. I don't know what vehicle, if any, could be done, but all of the, the survey monuments are gone.
Yes.
It's causing absolute chaos with the rebuilds. So anything you guys can do to help us on this?
We are aware of that, yeah. If I can quickly testify on behalf of the Hawaii Land Survey Association, we are trying to work with as many of the surveyors in Maui as we can right now, and I'm happy to have private conversations with you later.
Yeah, let's build a meeting because the committee's time is.
Absolutely. I'll switch you.
Yes, just, just to add, though, but you are addressing the areas owned by the state, like the schools and, and our buildings, and because I think you need to conform to the plans.
Well, and per the rules that are being. Well, and per the rules that are being changed, that just has to do with any, whether it be state or private lands that come in. Yeah, with regard to land court maps, file plans, things of that nature.
Sure, okay, all right. Thank you so much for your presence here. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 1308? Okay, hearing none, members, any questions of DAGs while they're here? Seeing none, Chair, shall we go into?
You go, right, you do second, I think.
Yes.
First up was Senate Bill Form 111. While I appreciate the testimony of the AG's office and of Budget and Finance, I think that what we're asking here is not unheard of, because other departments utilizing it. So as such, we'll note the concerns in the committee report. However, my recommendation is we put an effective date on it for further conversation. We'll move this along. Members, questions or comments? If not, Gov Ops, SB 411, Senate Draft One, I vote yes.
With amendments, yes.
Yes, with amendments, correct.
Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Morawaki.
Aye.
Senator Sandwana Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Favela is excused, measure passes.
Chair's recommendation on the Committee of Water and Land to move, to pass SB 411 with amendments. Any discussions, members? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Okay, Chair's recommendation to pass SB 411 with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Senator Chang is excused. Senator McKelvey?
Yes.
Senator Decourt?
Yes.
Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
For a second, I want a lot of.
Thank you. For SB 1103 relating to community districts, the Chair's recommendation on this measure is to defer those, though probably I would say there needs to be a lot of discussions on something like this and could be good in the next futures to come, but Chair's recommendation is to defer. You agree, Chair?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay. We'll proceed then with SB 1308. This is relating to plans. This is an administration's bill. The only amendments that the Chair's recommend is to recognize that there are technical amendments on this measure.
With clean date, though, yeah.
With the clean date, yes, as well. Okay, any discussions?
We note in the committee report, just, just so it's a flag for the public about the monument issue. Is that cool?
Okay, perhaps we could find some language.
Yeah, we'll find some language. We'll throw it to your office, is that cool?
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll have SMA work on some language for us then.
We'll get that to you right away.
And we'll have them check with you as well.
We'll get it to you right away.
Okay, for the Committee on Water and Land, Chair's recommendation on SB 1308 relating to plans to pass with amendments. Okay, any discussions? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Chair's recommendation to pass SB 1308 with amendments, noting the excuse of Senator Chang of the four members present. Any no votes or votes of reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Your committee?
Dabble up, right?
No, 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 you, you gotta vote, yeah. Yeah, we gotta vote.
Government Operations, same recommendation, Senate Draft One, I vote yea.
For the members present, are there any no votes or reservations for GBO?
Aye.
Got one there.
Senator, you need to stay with the low number.
Oh, it is Senate.
SB 1308, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Morawaki.
Aye.
Senator Sandwana Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Favela.
Aye.
Measure passes.
Yeah, thank you guys for helping to make it official. Aloha, everybody. Welcome to the Committee, Joint Committee hearings on Government Operations and our amazing friends from Agriculture and Environment. I will turn it over to my co-chair for housekeeping and for the bills.
Okay, good afternoon. It's February 11th. We're convened here in room 225 and video conferencing, which includes the audio and video of remote participants. It's being streamed live on YouTube. And in the unlikely event that our hearing is cut short, we will reconvene on business on Wednesday, February 12th, during AEN's time slot and public news will be posted. And because of our 90-minute time limit, there will be a two-minute time limit for all testifiers. And let's see, first measure is SB 539 relating to toxic chemicals. Requires state agencies that monitor environmental toxins and pollutants to establish environmental action levels, EALs, to ensure the preservation of a safe environment. Cohibes modifications to EALs unless certain procedural requirements are met and establishes a process to allow any resident to petition for modifications to an established EAL. First up, Hawaii State Department of Health.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbard and Chair McKelvey, and members of the committee. Grace Simmons, representing the Department of Health. We stand on our written testimony providing comments and want to ensure that the department is, it's important for us to maintain trust and communication with the community. And our, our testimony outlines the fact that we do want to maintain our, our conversations with the community. And we'll can do further education and provide training, excuse me, not training, provide webinars to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ted Boland from the Climate Protectors Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbard, Chair McKelvey, let's see, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. Ted Boland for the Climate Protectors Hawaii. Environmental action levels are an important threshold, a basic tool to identify kind of goals and limits that ought to be realized in order to protect people from health risks. There are various times when, when it's important to have these. And I think this, this bill is a good bill to try to establish that fundamental environmental protection. So I urge you to pass the bill. I'm available for any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Next is Melody Aduhua from the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party.
Good afternoon, Chairs McKelvey and Chair Gabbard. Thank you very much for this opportunity. This is a very good bill. We are very much in favor of it because the ESLs, they are essential for protecting public health and the environment from harmful contaminants. And we know that the Department of Health has the jurisdiction over the EALs, which is the environmental action levels. Now, this bill is good because it provides that for public notice and a minimum of 30-day comment period before the Department of Health can modify the EALs. But more importantly, it also provides for a process for residents to petition for any modification of the EALs. And this is really important because there are discrepancies between the EALs and the EPA's MCLs, which is the maximum contaminant levels. Let me give you an example. We've got dioxins and furons, which is the most toxic chemical known to science. And that occurs from waste incineration, such as from H-power. And for the EAL, according to the DOH, the parts per billion is zero, is .0004 parts per billion versus the MCL from the EPA is .0003 parts per billion. So there's that discrepancy. We don't want to see that discrepancy. More importantly, it's regarding PFAS. A lot of the PFAS, the Department of Health has been in alignment. However, there's one that's very important and which they are not, and that is PFBS. In which case it's 2,000 parts per trillion. And for the EPA's MCL, it's four parts per trillion. And this occurs in food packaging materials, firefighting foam, non-stick cookware, stain resistant fabrics, waterproof items, a lot of consumables. And yet we are allowing for that high of an amount of PFBS. So therefore, I would petition the DOH to make sure that it is congruent with the EPA's MCL. Thank you very much for that opportunity.
Thank you, Melody. Next up is Jamie Summing. On Zoom, Jamie, are you there on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Also, we have Kohar Bandera from Kalanani, Ohana Farm in support, as well as Sherry Pollak and Rosalie Luoh, also in support. Anyone else either online or present wanting to testify? Members, any questions? Senator McKelvey.
I guess it would be Department of Health. I'm just curious, does this allow them to petition for the state standards if they're violating the federal one, right?
This bill will allow that.
Yeah, so what if the feds eliminate? I'm hearing the feds are going to wipe out or eliminate or severely revisit all of these standards with, under this new EPA. What if that happens?
Your guess is as good as mine. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't mean to be flippant, but may I ask our state toxicologist to join me? I mean, there's some, he might be able to explain some of these numbers and these discrepancies.
That's okay, I just respect the Joint Committee's time. I will follow this conversation offline, but it does throw an interesting monkey wrench into this bill as far as being carried out. But thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the second measure on the agenda is SB 617 relating to the environment. Requires for each draft environmental assessment and draft environmental impact statement, a public hearing in the community directly affected by the underlying proposed action. First up is Mary Alice Evans from OPSD. The Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
Thank you, Chairs and members. We have comments with concerns, but we understand the issue that the bill is addressing. And we would be open to a, a different approach, which would be to amend the 343 rules to require a public meeting in a community that is directly affected by a proposed project. This, we could do this by amending the rules. Doesn't have to require a statutory amendment that would then honor the drafter's intent, which is to have a public scoping meeting that applicants and proposing agencies are required to hold prior to issuing a draft EIS in the community directly affected. And I think that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you very much. Next is Emma Ewen from DLNR.
This Department of Land and Natural Resources. And we did offer some comments with some concerns about the sometimes statewide types of projects that we issue, such as biocontrol releases and the difficulty of having public hearings in those, in the statewide. And also the issues with, you know, the pandemic and all these other problems with air travel might also make this a bit difficult. So you have our comments, thank you. Aloha.
Thank you. And we also have Kathy Gogel, Stacy Alpahy and Keonie Shizuma in support. Anyone else online or a person wanting to testify on this measure? Members, any questions? Okay, we're writing the decision. Do we have forum? Yes. Wa's coming?
No, I'm with Jimmy.
Brandon's on as well, he's, yeah.
At least you'll have four. Okay, we're ready to go.
Okay, we'll go right into decision making on SB 539.
Wait a second, wait a second, we need vote sheets.
Have you said?
We have vote sheets for GBO, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we got a. All right, on SB 539 relating to toxic chemicals, the Chair's recommendation requiring state agencies that monitor environmental toxins and pollutants to establish environmental action levels, EALs, to ensure the preservation of a safe environment. The Chair's recommendation will be to pass as is. Any discussion? Chair votes aye, Senator Rhodes.
Chair's recommendation on SB 539 is to pass as is. Chair Gabbard votes yes, Vice Chair Richards is excused, Senator Decourt is excused, I'll vote yes, Senator Wa.
Aye.
Your recommendation's adopted.
Okay, thank you. Committee on Government Operations, same recommendation, 539, Senate Draft One, I vote yes.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Where's my vote sheet? Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Morawaki.
Aye.
Senator Sandwana Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Favela.
Aye.
And the measure passes. We'll shift them back here to SB 617. On the, requiring the public hearings for the EAs and for EISs. Chair's recommendation will be to pass with the amendments that was brought forth by the, from OPSD to have a hearing in the affected community, wherever that is. Any discussion?
So it would be for the EISs but not for draft EAs in any way?
Correct.
Okay.
And the public does have a chance as a 30-day period for input on the EAs.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I just think this is focused more at specific projects and specific areas than generally statewide.
Okay, any discussion? Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendation on SB 617 is to pass with amendments. Chair Gabbard votes yes, Vice Chair Richards is excused, Senator Decourt is excused, I'll vote yes. Senator Wa.
Aye.
Recommendation's adopted.
Thank you, members. Hey, Committee on Government Operations, same recommendation, Senate Bill 617, Senate Draft One, I vote yes.
Asho aye, Senator Morawaki.
Aye.
Senator Sandwana Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Favela.
Aye.
Thank you very much, measure passes.
I think we passed, right?
We are passed.
Well, to be honest.